Evening, everyone, and welcome to our City Council Evening. This is May 16th. It is approximately 5:31 and 30 seconds. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Frist.
Here.
All right, thank you. This first part of the meeting is a moment of silence, and we have had a lot of challenge this past week. One, the passing of former Councilwoman Sharon Juwan, former Mayor Paul Tim. We definitely have seen what's happened in Milwaukee and New York, and also, I mean, Buffalo, New York. And so, we've had a lot of challenge. So, could you all join me in a moment of silence, and your hearts, hearts and thoughts and your prayers be directed to the people that are hurting? Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Rob Nichols?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, along with the minutes of the May 2nd, 2022, regular session, and the minutes of the April 26th, 2022, special session.
Second.
A motion has been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. First up on the agenda before oral presentations, we have a couple proclamations, and would Mr. Fire Chief, Pat Treelaw, please join me up front.
He told me to roast you before you got up here. All right, whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical service teams consist of emergency medical physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, law enforcement, dispatchers, and educators, and administrators, and whereas the members of emergency medical teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas emergency medical providers, often with little to no compensation, if volunteers, and occasionally at great risk, at great risk to themselves, continue to provide critical and timely care and transport to those in need of their services. Now be it resolved that I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Service Services Week in Waterloo, Iowa, and that we appreciate and commend our emergency medical services personnel for always being ready for today and prepared for tomorrow. Chief Treelaw.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Council, for the proclamation. I'll just say a few words and turn it over to our medical supervisor, Jason Hernandez. But as the proclamation says, it's truly a team effort when it comes to emergency medical services, whether it's dispatch, our friends in law enforcement, our ER physicians, the nurses, it's all totally, total group effort. And so, we're really proud of the team that we have here in Waterloo and the surrounding areas. Should be noted, a lot of the communities that are around us are all volunteer, and they man their ambulances and with personnel that are volunteers. So, we have the utmost respect for them. We've got a great crew here in Waterloo, and we're proud of our men and women, but we're also proud of our partners. And I'll just turn it over to Jason.
Yep, thanks again. I'm just gonna mirror what the chief says. We're super proud of the men and women that serve emergency medical services on our department. We also want to share and showcase our capabilities with the public who supports us. So, this Thursday, we are gonna have an open house for the public, 5:30 to 7:30, so we hope as many of you can come out and join us. We'll have some food and drink and some displays out for you, and able to answer questions and kinda show you what we can do. So, thanks.
Instead of food and beverages, beverages. All right, I just wanna say, and I know I go out on a limb and speak for the entire council and all the citizens, we appreciate all your efforts, whether paid or volunteer. You mean so much to this community, to safety and welfare and protection. So, from the bottom of our heart, we wanna thank you as well, and please let the rest of the department know, we appreciate you and support you. So, thank you, gentlemen. All right, next, I would like to call up Randy and, is it Sandy and Randy or Sandy?
It was Sandy.
All right. Come on down. You drop your heart. Don't drop your heart. Be smart. Don't drop heart.
It's like he planned it.
No pun intended.
Like he planned it.
Not that time of the year. Woo, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts of skilled, uh, public work officials, public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works department is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th, 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the City of Waterloo, and we call upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions with public works officials making every day to our health, safety, and comfort, and quality of life. So, Randy.
Yes, thanks, Mayor and Council, and kinda like what the proclamation just said, you know, public works, it plays a key, intricate part in just the daily quality of life, as far as what everybody expects, you know, like I said, you know, the roads, street, water, traffic, water treatment, everything, you know, sewer collection that it takes just, we sometimes take for granted as far as what that is, but Public Works recognizes for that. And then actually, this Wednesday, we do have an open house in conjunction with Public Works Week, so that's going from 3 to 7 at Public Works at 625 Glenwood, and same thing, we have refreshments, and we'll have a lot of the equipment and stuff out there for family and friends to come enjoy.
Well, I just wanna say too, your departments are kinda like the unsung heroes within our community. When there's a problem, you hear about it. When there's not a problem, you rarely hear about it, and sometimes it's good not to hear about it. But today and this week is a great opportunity to really hear about all the services that you provide to this local community. You know, the folks in your departments work so hard and probably go unnoticed, but on behalf of the City Council, on behalf of the citizens, and our other departments within the city too, we thank you so much for all your efforts, and let everyone in your departments know that they are loved and appreciated and supported. So, thank you. All right, and really quickly, Chief, you wanna tell us about the 19th? Is that the National, that was tomorrow, tomorrow, National Peace Police Memorial Day, annual?
Sure. The National Police Memorial, for those of you that don't know, was established by President Kennedy back in the late 1960s, and it honors fallen police officers around our country, fallen law enforcement officers, I should say, from all walks of life. So, National Police Week is one, is a solemn ceremony, especially close to me. I have eight friends on the wall, one police officer that worked for me. So, the loss that, that it represents is really something that I don't know that most people would get unless you visited there. But with that being said, we have officers there now to take place, to be a part of the ceremony, I should say, and we'd ask that just thank your police officers for what they do. They do a valuable job and a yeoman's job of protecting the city, and in many ways, it goes unseen and unheard, just like your, your last reference with public works. When you don't see them, you're wondering, you know, what they're up to, but most of the times that our officers are really doing their very best to keep this community safe. And I think we'd all agree that honoring those that have fallen in the past is something that we should, you know, we should all do collectively. Tomorrow, here in Black Hawk County, at the memorial, the Veterans Memorial in the city, we are having a 10 o'clock ceremony here. It's not quite as large as the national ceremony in DC, but we just ask any citizens that would like to come out and would like to honor those that have fallen in line of duty from Black Hawk County and from our State Patrol, come out and just really show your reverence and appreciation for the police officers that have served and given their lives of service in the service of you here in Black Hawk County. So, tomorrow at 10 a.m. is when it all kicks off. It's not in conjunction with the national ceremony, but it is nonetheless as important to, to show up and really support these guys. They could use it in times like these. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, it's now time for oral presentations, your opportunity to address the City Council on non-agenda-related items. I do have several speakers to speak to Resolution Number 10, which is in regards to the purchase agreement, real estate purchase agreement with the Supervisors Club, and I have three registered speakers for the Paradise Estates Resolution Number 5. So, we will call on you during those times, but right now, if you have a non-agenda-related item, please come up, after which, I think there's some cup, a few council members that would like to make some, some comments as well. So, please come up, state your name and address for the records, and you have three minutes to let us know your thoughts.
Carol Gustafson, 209 Forest Avenue in Waterloo. I did not see anything in the agenda in regards to the police chief's raise. My question, and a question that I hear many of...
That's number...
Did I miss it?
Number 13 on the agenda, so you can come back during that time.
I will. Okay, thank you.
David Dyrer, 3145 West Forest Street. Did I understand correctly that Consent Agenda Number 10 is being removed for further discussion? If not, I would like to request that. You said a Number 10, and I'm not sure which Number 10 it was.
We're talking on the, on the council agenda, on the main agenda.
I would request that we remove Number Consent Agenda, Agenda Number 10 for further discussion. And my main reason up here tonight is, and I'd like to get an answer on this before I continue, if possible, is the alley behind the Legion property, city property?
It's Number 10 on the Consent Agenda, A-10, is Resolution Setting the Date of Consolidation With Affected Taxing Entities, May 30.
It's on the Martin Road thing, sir.
Right. So, all right. We'll remove it.
Okay, and my question, is the alley behind the Legion...
We'll, we'll come, at that time, we'll come back.
For Number 10? Okay.
All right.
That's my first question. My second question, is the alley behind the Legion property, city property, behind Legion Building city property, plus 138?
Uh, yes.
The condition of the alley stinks. There are trip hazards there, and who is liable if somebody trips and falls and gets hurt? Because they put that, I don't know what they call it, where it perforates down through, and it's sunken probably two inches, all the way around the cement, and it's right by their back entrance where they have fish fries, fish and chicken fries, and people can trip and get themselves hurt. So, the city would be liable there because those perforated blocks have sunk two inches. Not a bad situation for the city to have that liability. I don't know if there's anything can be done about it, other than take the blocks out and cement it, but I think it needs to be looked at because the city doesn't need that liability. Thank you.
Well, the first thing is letting us know, and we have folks that are listening and hearing that, so we'll take a look at it. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the City Council on non-agenda-related items?
My name's Wayne Nathan, 548 Cloveville. Have you, I might be, have you already approved the contract for Police Chief?
It's coming up a little bit later. Do you wanna speak to that item?
I'd be glad to come back at that time. What, what number is that on the agenda?
It is item number 13.
Okay, I'll, I'll be back at that time.
Brandon Alvarado, 217 West Fourth Street. I am just here representing Design Council, and I just wanted to announce that this Saturday, the 21st, is Design Council's, or Main Street Waterloo's, Main Street Suite. It's basically, for those who don't know, kind of our annual spring cleaning day, and we'd love to see more volunteers. I just wanted to get the word out. The event goes from 9 to 1, and we will be meeting at Anton's Garden at 518 Sycamore Street. Anyone who is interested in volunteering can sign up from the Main Street Waterloo Website's volunteer page at mainstreetwaterloo.org. Volunteers will be provided a free lunch for their time, and it's just a really good event for bringing the community and local business owners together to show downtown Waterloo some love and help keeping it looking its best the whole year long. So, again, you can sign up from the website, and there's also a Facebook event page for more information and questions. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your efforts.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, my name is George Meeks, 609 East Donald Street, East High Class of 1965, for, for those that would like to know. I was supposed, I was gonna lighten you up and get ready for what I gotta say. Mr., Mr. Mayor and Council, this, this is the first time I've addressed the, the new, new council fully, but I, my, and I appreciate your, your thoughts before the, the time of silence, and I'm, I'm asking, asking the council to, to at a, at a work session or someplace that you consider, cause on the, on, on the agenda has prayer or moments of silence, and I would, I would ask you to consider having, having clergy throughout the city come and, come and pray for, pray for our city, and especially our city and you all for the serious work you have to do, and we, you even have two, two pastors I know of, Reverend Sanchez and Reverend, Reverend Jones are both pastors, so I don't, and, but I, I know in olden days, most of you weren't born, that it used to have, always had a clergy come up and give a prayer to the, to the council and on behalf of, of the city before they, before the meeting started. Sometimes they would stay for the meeting, sometime they would, would not, but I think that if we have the, we will see the diversity of our, of our worship centers, if, if we could get them to come and be here, and also that would give them opportunity to find out firsthand the business of the, what's going on in the, in the city. That's, that's what, that's what my, my wish is, that, that you would consider having, having a prayer, and, you know, and, and of course, the Baptist people, we know how to hold them down, you can put, no, not to pray too long, but, but I, in, in all seriousness, because of, of the state of our cities, nation, world, you know, I, I think we have prayer, and I remember the, the meetings that I used to be a part of, when, when the person offered prayer, as a believer, brought your mind back to what you're doing, the seriousness of it, and makes you have, have discernment and be willing to compromise and, and hear what the other person is saying before, before react. So, so thank you. That's, that's my request for 2022. I did it in 2021, so thank you.
Mr. Meeks, before you go, when I first started, we actually had two years, I think it was two, two or three years, where we invited not just Baptist clergy, cause our community is made up of a lot of different faiths, and those that don't necessarily believe as well. So, at the time, we couldn't get all the council members to participate, and part of the reason being is, I mean, some, I mean, some did, but after a while, it became a little bit of a, a challenge, because, you know, you had, we had representatives of our community that don't believe that there is a higher power. They believe in a higher morale, but maybe not a power. And then we had individuals that were from all different sects of faith as well, but, I mean, I'll have the conversation with the council members, but at the time, it was decided by probably the majority to have the moment of silence where people can do their personal petitions. So, I understand exactly where you're coming from, but it was, it was, it was something that we did when I first started, so I'll have a conversation with council members.
And, and what happened, Mr. Mayor Hart, what happens when, when someone is praying, they, they bring to your mind things that you're not, all you, a moment of silence, and I'm being, I'm being judgmental and saying, a moment of silence, I'm waiting for it to go to the real thing, period. And so, to me, prayer sets the stage for, for your business at hand, and we, and the councils have very serious business at hand all the time, and that's, that's what my, I, I hope that you consider that.
I agree. We had more fights after we got done praying.
Well, yeah, sure, sure.
But, but definitely, I'll talk to each council member.
If you, if the prayer speaks to not fighting, your prayer for wouldn't fight.
Absolutely.
Until, until later on.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you, Mr. Meeks. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Council on non-agenda-related items?
I'm Jack Black of 227 Downing, and I'd like to know, on that project on Franklin Street, ex to CVS, the city has given that place a number of advancements. I go by there quite regularly, and there's nobody doing anything. I've worked with contractors for 45 years in all kinds of weather, and if they said it was too hot to work there, you start early in the morning so you can get ready earlier in the day. But, I mean, to have nothing moved there for I don't know how long, and I think we've given that approval for four or five different times, and I think it's just ridiculous. If they can't get something done, then get out of there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And we just got an update, the council members got an update on the project, so developer does state that it's still slated for December, so the hope is we'd see some substantial movement within the next couple weeks, month or so, so that's the hope, so. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to non-agenda-related items? Going a second time, Council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, for a lot of reasons, this last week has been probably not the greatest for some of us. So, last week, we learned that a former colleague of, of many of us, and a friend to many of us, Sharon Juwan, had passed away because of her long battle with breast cancer. Sharon was a friend. She was an absolute force of nature. She had an infectious laugh, and I am incredibly grateful for her time on council, and I'm very grateful for her mentorship, but I'm most grateful for her friendship, and she will be sorely missed by, by many of us. In addition, this weekend, we saw in Buffalo, New York, 10 folks brutally murdered by a white supremacist terrorist, which is the best way that I have to describe it because it's the most accurate. These folks were purposefully killed because of their race. The grocery store where these folks went after church was specifically targeted because it was in an African-American neighborhood. because it was in an African-American neighborhood. And the manifesto in which the gentleman who wrote this, and I use that term in the loosest of definitions, was full of the cogent thoughts and fears that white folks in this country would lose power and be replaced by those that he viewed as inferior because of the color of their skin. And while Buffalo, New York is several thousand miles away from here, it bears a striking resemblance to the city that I call home. It bears a striking resemblance in terms of racial makeup and socioeconomic makeup to the city in which I teach, into which my children were born, into which I spend every day doing my best job as I perceive it for this community. And it broke my heart because too often in our body politics, we have moved beyond a conversation of, I respectfully disagree with your policy choices. I understand that you are for X and I am for Y and at the end of the day, we'll take our half loaves and we'll go home. Instead, we have moved away from a cordial discussion about the future of our nation and of our community into a blood sport where those of us with power because of where we are born, because of the wealth that we have been, that we have accumulated or have been given, because of our religious or education or whatever factor gives us some vestige of power. There are some of those, unfortunately, too many of those who perceive that the use of violence is acceptable to contain that power when they disagree with other folks. And that is wrong. And we all, myself included, need to work incredibly hard today, tomorrow, and in the years ahead, if the democratic experiment of our republic is to survive in lowering the temperature on the conversations. We are going to have some tough conversations here tonight. We have had some tough conversations in this chamber before and I am very doubtful that we will not have some more in the future. But those conversations can be had in a respectful tone in a place that accepts that all of us, all of us, have a legitimacy in being here. And all of us have a voice in how our community functions. Because when we don't treat people with legitimacy, when we raise the temperature too far, we sanction things like what happened in Buffalo. And that is not acceptable. That is not America. That is not the nation that I want any of my children to grow up in and live in. And so we need to work and be better, and I include myself fully in this discussion, on lowering the temperature and having respectful conversations. Finally, on a less somber note, I hope, I will be having a constituent post next Monday, five thirty to six thirty at the library, same location, meeting room A. Anyone is welcome. It is not limited to folks in Ward Two. I would like to hear from anyone who can make it. I do not have a, a staff member lined up. It will probably just be me. I know that is a disappointment for many folks, but it will just be me. But I, I want to hear from folks and what their concerns are. We're, we're maybe not going to disagree, we're not going to agree and we might disagree. But it's very important that we have these conversations. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to take this moment to honor Ms. Sharon as well. Prior to me running for city council, I had a meeting with Ms. Sharon at Newton's Cafe. And I'll just tell a quick story that warms my heart when I think of Ms. Sharon. We were sitting there talking and laughing and she had asked for coffee about twice, but the young lady just did not bring her this coffee. I don't know what was taking her so long. And I was like, excuse me, can we, can we get some coffee here? And Ms. Sharon was like, oh, I've got someone to fight for me. I said, always. And so that's something that really stands out for me is she was aware of the fact that no matter what, I was always going to fight for what's right and speak up for those that needed it the most. And I just want to say that I'm going to carry that out throughout my entire term and honor Ms. Sharon by speaking up for those that have used their voice that maybe have not been heard. And I'll continue to smile. I know sometimes, I'm going to say this, y'all don't get mad. Council meetings can be kind of stuffy. They, they get just a little bit dry. And so if you see me up here smiling or anything like that, I am embodying what I feel Ms. Sharon would have and that was being lighthearted, understanding and, and always smiling. And so if you see that today, please don't be offended because I'm going to smile throughout the entire day. No matter what we discuss, I'm doing that because I am honoring someone who, who mentored me. And, and yeah, so see my smile today and I hope you smile back. And if you don't, I'm still going to smile at you.
Anyone else to make a motion to close?
Wait, we'll speak up. Don't, don't try, y'all don't try to wait to go last.
Well, hello, everyone. This week's been pretty tough for me. I learned that the reason, one of the main reason that I am coming to this, that I came to the Cedar Valley, my professor of Viola is leaving to go to a different state. I've had several deaths happen. Sharon, who was one of my largest mentors behind other large figures in this community. She's the reason I moved toward one because I wanted to be closer to her and talk with her more. Two days before her illness struck, I had actually just called her, asking if I could have a conversation with her to get some ideas, get some mentorship because she was such an amazing person. And what I think we have to, what I learned most from her is not only are you not going to agree with everyone, there are going to be emotions and you have to be aware of everyone's emotions. And you have to be able to respect those emotions regardless of how tense it may be. And something I've tried my best, and her and I had some tense conversations ourselves trying to get through some of these ideas. I think that was her way of teaching me is that you have to be able to listen to everyone regardless of who they are. But the biggest thing that she, she taught me is being on the council is extremely important because you get to represent your citizens, but you can change things without being on it. You can make a difference without being on this dais. And for all of you that are here, you, you show that because your voice is what we listen to. So know that even if we may not agree on everything, and this is coming from Sharon, I remember her saying that she's like, you're not going to agree with everyone on everything. But afterwards, you still need to be able to go up to them and say, I hope you at least respect me as a person as I respect you as a person. It's, it's, that, that hit me hard. I don't cry. Came close. I came very close. But I couldn't flee when I learned about that, when, when I learned that she wasn't going to be my neighbor anymore, that I wouldn't be able to just reach out and listen to her fantastic advice. And I really wish I would have reached out a couple of weeks earlier so I could have had one more conversation with her. So thank you, everyone, for being here and know that we're all here and Sharon, and she's looking down on us today. And even if we don't agree with things that we talk about later, I'm still going to shake your hand. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, listening to Jonathan, it kind of brought back something as far as Sharon. Sharon was the type of individual that, yeah, she, no matter what it was, you could talk with her about it. And I remember, I'm just going to tell you a quick story. Had an issue going on with the council and it was like four of the council members agreed with something and the other three didn't. I'm not going to get into what it was. And so it could, it could have been where, you know, we got four votes. We don't need to talk about it or anything else. The four votes are going to be there. And I remember Sharon calling me and she said, Jerome, can we compromise? And I said, what do you got, Sharon? And she told me and it made sense and I agreed to it. And by the time it was all said and done, thanks to Sharon Juwan, it was a seven oh vote. So that's the kind of woman she was.
As with everybody, this was a really hard week for, for me. You know, being a pharmacist and I'm hoping I'm stepping on any bounds by this, but when somebody passes away, people may bring their medications to the pharmacy to dispose of them. And it was my Saturday to work and when those bag of medicines came, it was hard. It was really hard. Sharon was, Sharon was very inspirational to me in my decision to run. She's my predecessor in my seat that I'm sitting in right now. The first time I met Sharon, it was at an NAACP meeting. And, you know, my first getting to know her there, it kind of let me know what kind of woman she was and what kind of person she was, that some of the conversations that were had there were tough. But she, by being there, she let me know that it's important when you're in the position to step into the hardest arenas, to hear people and be, make sure that people feel heard. And so as my councilman in her former seat, I hope to embody that. Please, anybody, if you have any questions, feel free, feel comfortable to reach out to me. And I just hope and pray for comfort for her family.
Thank you. Right, anyone else? I, I just want to just, just add in just a, a little bit, you know, Sharon, our relationship was pretty incredible. At the time, we were definitely from different parts of the railroad tracks. And Sharon was just, it's hard to explain it. She was supportive, but yet she would come to the office and let me know her thoughts. She, she would tell me and then she'd give me a hug and say, love you kiddo. Sharon, she made some promises when she got elected that she would make sure that she just didn't stick to what was her constituency base. Sharon would go to NAACP meetings, go to things on each side of this community. And if you know Sharon, Sharon was not always politically correct sometimes and would say some things that would get her in trouble. But she would step it up. She would learn from it. And she really became an active, you know, an activist for our community book reads and educating our community on discrimination and, and being there. She helped to work with the, the program to help ex-offenders and working with the trainings for the businesses. So she wasn't just here just to hold a seat. She was actively involved and engaged. And, you know, a lot of people didn't know that when she was coming to council meetings or on agenda meetings during Thursday, that her health problems had her going out of town to get some, some, I won't get too detailed in it. But every excuse that a person could have not to be present and have good excuses for not being here, she didn't allow that to overshadow her commitment to this council, her commitment to the workers of this community and the people of this community. And so I know a lot of our department heads and folks will miss. We used to have meetings on Thursday and Sharon would always chime in. So our meetings would be actually thirty-five minutes, would last like an hour and fifteen minutes. But she wanted to know and she asked questions because she, she, she was concerned and she cared. So I, I love Sharon. That, Sharon was like one of my best friends, like an additional aunt in my life and to many of us here. And so, yeah, it's a, it's a tough challenge, but she's definitely not suffering anymore. And our hearts and minds are definitely with her family as they move forward. There's services on this Friday. You got those timed? The visitation is, is that from twelve?
Two to seven.
Two, two to seven at Lock, Locker.
On Tower Drive.
And the funeral service is Saturday.
Eleven o'clock on Saturday.
Eleven o'clock on Saturday. So, so man, here's to, here's to, here's to Ms. Sharon. We thank you so much. And I know I echo the sentiments of our city staff as well. And I forgot, last order of business, there's someone that would like to introduce themselves to, to us? Did you, did you want to come up really quickly? Please come up to the podium. So sorry for bringing you up now.
It's all right. My name's Maria Kiper. I actually live in Cedar Falls, so I don't live in Waterloo, but I'm still living here. I am the new reporter for you guys for the career. I just wanted to introduce myself to all of you. My name's Maria Kiper.
All right. Thank you. Nice to meet you. It's the first time we've ever had that happen. Right.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to close public comments.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Oral presentation's closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of one A one and for bills payment for Monday, May ninth at four million eight hundred twenty thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. And for May sixteenth at one million six hundred ten thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Sorry, with pulling off number ten, sorry, with the amendment, taking off number ten, one eight ten.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chouse.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution setting the date of consultation with affected taxing entities as May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and date of public hearing is June twentieth, twenty twenty-two in conjunction with the approval of amendment number six to the Martin Road Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to expand the boundaries, update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan, and other general updates to the plan, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice.
Motion has been made with the second.
David Drier, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I downloaded the map and I noticed that most of it is the golf course and the swimming pool area. And I guess my question is, what's the ultimate goal for this expansion of the TIF? Is it possibly the closing of Ur- Urborne Golf Course for future housing in this area?
Thank you, Mr. Drier.
It just doesn't seem to me like we need to, it's already city property.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Drier. Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We are expanding the TIF, number one, in the southern portion of it, south of Martin Road. We have some potential outlot development near O'Neill Steel. So we'll be putting those back in. As you may recall, we extended some sewer in that area to create more buildable lots. The majority of the expansion is going up Highway sixty-three and picking up the Burns Park Golf Course. And it gives the city what we believe are better financial options for moving ahead with the pool project.
Are you closing the golf course?
We are not closing the golf course.
Thank you. Madam, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chouse.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Foyce. Yeah. Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Got me flustered. Mr. Foyce.
Mr. Bowden, yes. All right, just really quickly want to acknowledge appointment to the International Property Maintenance Board. Carol Gustafson is the appointed, so we want to thank you so much. You served before in various roles with the city, so we want to thank you again for stepping up and stepping forward to help us. And also to acknowledge the appointment of Fire Chief Pat Trelor and also City Clerk Kelly Felkley as well, so. All right, could someone take number two?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and thus for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-two budget amendment.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone? Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that'd like to uh, speak to this or are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing.
Second.
Motion been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving budget amendment for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of public of notice of public hearing, and that is a request by Mark Moser to rezone three point six eight acres from A one Agricultural District to R dash one C dash C Conditional Zoning District for a contractor business located at forty-five twenty-eight Kimball Avenue.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Is there anyone that would like to make comments uh, on this particular uh, item to rest, request to rezone? Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close a hearing and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time in ordinance, amend ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four. Approving request by Mark Moser to rezone three point six eight acres from A one Agricultural District to R dash one C dash Z Conditional Zoning District for a contractor business located at forty-five twenty-eight Kimball Avenue.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. No, there is a, is there some?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Mr. Moser is here. I know he is planning to build uh, several buildings and an expansion, so probably hurrying it up helps his construction season, but he is here if you have any questions for him.
Counsel, any questions? Alright, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Moser. Uh, number four.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nichols.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notes of public hearing for sale and conveyance of city uh, property located at west of thirty-one eighty West Airline Highway in the amount of one dollar to R N K Investments LLC with five years of tax rebates at fifty percent and approval of a development and minimum assessment agreement in the amount of eight hundred twenty-two thousand dollars and zero cents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would have questions on this item on the agenda? Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city property located west of thirty-one eighty West Airline Highway in the amount of one dollar with five years tax of tax rebates of fifty percent to R N K Investments LLC and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Uh, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is not farmland, correct?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. No, this is land that we actually acquired as part of a expansion by Accra Gear and uh, in the older Control of Facts building, so we acquired this additional land for industrial development. Telker Excavating was actually built two buildings out there, so they'll be building two more with this project, so we're, we're good to have them as a partner.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Alright, thank you. They good? Uh, everybody good? Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution, uh, adopt a resolution approving a development agreement and minimum assessment agreement with R N K Investments LLC in the amount of eight hundred twenty-two thousand dollars and zero cents in conjunction with the development of a sixteen hundred and eight, sixteen thousand eight hundred square foot building and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Chiles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Uh, could someone take number five, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a variance to the requirements of the subdivision, subdivision ordinance in section eleven dash one dash thirteen variances relating to the approval of the preliminary plot of Paradise Estates addition, subject to the condition that any final plat or final plats for any portion of the approved preliminary plot of Paradise Estates addition submitted for approval on or prior to May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four shall be subject to any new zoning restrictions or subdivision regulations adopted by the City of Waterloo prior to submittal of any such final plat for any portion of said area.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Uh, on this item, uh, we have several speakers that are slated to speak. And the first person I would like to call up is uh, Mr. Mike Hennig. Uh, sure.
Um, my name's Brittany Cook and my address is six one one four Kimball Avenue.
Ms. Cook, can you um, speak in to the mic? Yeah, for some reason.
Is that better?
That is.
That is better. Um, I am here representing the Orange Neighborhood Association um, in regards to the development plan. The development's gonna bring a lot of opportunities for the city of Waterloo, for our neighborhood. We are asking for some transparency in regards to the planning, so that way we can establish the best possible opportunities and outcomes for this development. Um, the O N A has some concerns regarding collaboration as the project moves forward. At this time, we are asking for the following commitments. One, commitment to good communication between all parties, including meeting between the city, developer, and the association as needed to provide milestone updates. Commitment to adherence to traffic and safety studies and to take action regarding identified issues. Commitment to work with the Waterloo Water Works to address water issues, including water pressure to the existing O N A area and proposed development. Commitment to work with the Waterloo Community School District regarding issues that relate to Orange Elementary School. And last, commitment to work with the Complete Street Advisory Committee and Leisure Services Commission on improvements to the proposed development that relates to complete streets and recu- recreational opportunities. Our family moved to the Orange Township area in twenty twenty. Um, the midst of the pandemic, we still had neighbors coming and social distancing and welcoming, welcoming us to the neighborhood. Um, not something when we moved into our last home ten years ago. I lived there for ten years and hardly knew who my neighbors were. Um, but this is just an example of Orange Township and who we are and why this new addition is important to us. Um, when Orange Township became a township in the early nineteen hundreds, it was built by retired farmers who didn't wanna move into the city. And here we are a hundred years later and the members of the Neighborhood Association still feel the same way. We're there because we enjoy that aesthetic value of living in the country and what that has to offer, and yet still close to town. When we are looking at um, establishing more residential area in that neighborhood, our goal is to maintain those values that we have as a community um, while we're growing the the township, the environment that we have out there. We stand by the um, the development. We want to see it there. We just wanna make sure it's there with the right integrity and to represent the area that's already present. Um, I think that things that we consider that are opportunities in that area are parks. And one thing that I want to look at are for you guys to consider is the safety aspect. Um, Orange is a wonderful school. Uh, we are blessed for our kids to be able to attend Orange. There's traffic concerns and there's concerns with how the plots are drawn up now and how the accessibility to the school as far as traffic is concerned. Um, so I think we really need to look at and evaluate safety as a big concern. Um, my next, parks. So we live out there. My kids go to Orange. Orange School, you cannot attend, you cannot go to their parks during the day because classes are out at recess. Um, so I don't really consider that a accessible park for parents that homeschool. We have, my gosh, over a dozen homeschooled kids in our area that I'm aware of, and they don't have access to parks. The one that we do have has a slide and a rock wall, and unfortunately, that's it. So with this new um, development, I think it would be a great opportunity to put in um, maybe an inclusion park. Cedar Falls just built one. Um, I think that's an opportunity to provide that to Waterloo. Um, we do not have one of those. Um, and just I think it's an opportunity to expand on the greatness that's already there. And that is all. Thank you for listening and allowing me the time today.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next, uh, I'd like to call on my Mrs. Hennig. Alright, Miss, Miss Hennig, uh, would you, you want him to go first? Okay, he's going first.
What's, what's pink shirts for?
Oh, I'm, oh, I forgot to explain that. This is in honor of Sharon tonight.
I'm a little surprised it's not red and gold. Oh, alright, there it is. Mike Hennig, one thirty-eighth Side Hill Drive, Waterloo, Iowa. Uh, I wanna start out recognizing a birthday today. Today is Teresa Hoofnagle's ninety-seventh birthday. Who's Teresa Hoofnagle? Her and her husband Wayne are the, probably the oldest and definitely the longest tenured residents of Orange Neighborhood Association. She's having a car child shower today, if you've seen it in the paper. Uh, I'm sure Wayne and, and they moved there in the mid-fifties. So before I, it was even part of the city. And then in the uh, uh, sixties, it became part of the city. And I'm sure that they worked with, with the Liptie boys and, and family on creating the Liptie addition that we live in. That's existing neighborhood that's there now. And in fact, Liptie's put Grace Boulevard straight down from their driveway, the two oh three Orange Road. They lived on the south side and they got all these meatloafs coming on on the north side, so that was, that was a step forward. They can also talk to the low water pressure that came when the city put in water and sewer. They're in the very low water pressure area of the neighborhood up on Orange Road and uh, went through that in the early seventies where water came to the neighborhood. So now we're taking a step forward, it looks like, to uh, welcome some new neighbors across Kimball in another direction, so we just want them to, I thank Teresa and her family and others, the Liptie's were giving us a great neighborhood to live in, and we wanna provide that for, for our new neighbors across Liptie's, or across Kimball, so that's the part there. Uh, the council asked for, for us to have a meeting with developers, the city people in the neighborhood, and we had forty-six, forty-seven people uh, meet a week ago last Thursday. I think it was a good meeting. A lot of stuff got on the table and I think we made some steps forward, so full speed ahead. Uh, but we do want the, the commitments that we was talking about here, so we think that would make it even better. Um, and we're happy to take a lead on that, just like we did setting up the meeting a week ago last Thursday for each of the commitment areas and, and we can set up meetings if you like. I do wanna thank the council members and the city staff and for sure, all the neighbors that showed up on two days' notice. We had over thirty-five people show up. Some people didn't even know it was happening. So uh, with that, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mrs. Hennig, yes.
Okay, I guess I really don't know what's uh, left to do uh, with that, but I guess as you consider this, that uh, have the council members seen those um, commitments? So I hope that that's part of your discussion because those are very important. And one thing I'd like to mention, I was young once upon a time too, and that's when I moved to Orange, the Orange Neighborhood. So what happens with people that live in Orange? They stay there. They are, that is what we want that neighborhood to be. We want it to be a place where people want to live for forty or fifty years, where they set their roots, where their kids come back. So let's make this something special. Let's do it right. And you know, this is, this is a community. It really is. And um, in fact, Orange has its own community book. I forgot to bring it tonight. But um, you can find a copy at the Waterloo Public Library in their historical room because um, it is a really special place, and I don't want to, that to change. I want it to stay a special place. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to uh, number five on our agenda?
David Drier, thirty-one forty-five West Four Street. As I've said in the past, I don't have no skin in this game, but something that sparked my mind was that several years ago when this first started, I think there was a commitment by the city of Waterloo to improve the water pressure out there, and they're still complaining about that. What's up?
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, please come up.
Cory O'Dap, uh, hopefully a developer of this piece of ground. Um, I wanna thank the members that did show up at the meeting the other night when we had the meeting with all the neighbors. I feel that it went well. Um, it was short-lived. I didn't have much time, but it was kinda pushed and we made do with what we had. Um, again, I, I want this to be a successful project like uh, the neighbors do. I think I'm on the same page with them. I agreed to the terms that they set forth in front of you guys. Um, so really, I don't really have much to say, other than I hope this goes through. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Alright. And uh, what we'll do, what we'll do, we'll have uh, counsel make some comments and then I'll make some comments after that, so uh, stick around.
Will do, thank you.
Alright, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Please.
George Walters, fifty-four oh four Kimball. And uh, my only question is, I don't have a problem, you know, with the, with the housing. I'm, I'm glad it's going in. It's, it's, it's happening. It's a good thing. But it's that seven or eight acres on the north, northwest uh, partial of this property. You can see it, you had it up on your plot map. And I think that's the pre, the, the owner now, he's gonna section that off and keep that. Is that correct? He wasn't gonna sell that seven or eight acres? Yeah. Now, and my only concern, that's right outside my, my dining room window. And I mean, what, what, what's gonna, can anything be built there? I mean, can, can there be like a mansion or something, some gaudy thing built there? I, you know, I understand this property has every right to, but you know, I'm the fourth generation on my farm. My kids are the fifth. You know, we've been there quite a long time. And I don't need to see, alright, I'll say be like that. I don't wanna see some gaudy, you know, mansion or something built there for no reason. I mean, i- it's not gonna, if something like that goes up, you know, and I mean, we talked about, I mean, it's not gonna match the aesthetics of the other houses being built in there or anything like that. You know, is there gonna be some kind of stipulation on, on, well, I don't know if you can stipulate, the guy knows, but.
Yeah, I mean, he owns. Noel, if you wanna step up and see, speak to it. Sir, you wanna finish your comments?
No, that, that's, I, I, that's my, that's my only concern. I'm not here to buck what's going on, you know? I mean, I, I'm glad to see it. I mean, that'd be a great place for all the houses, but I just wanna know what's going across from my dining room window.
So Noel, what's the process or is that something that we control? He owns the land?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So that piece to come back, I mean, they could build one house on it right now as it sits. If they were to come back and build a cul-de-sac with, to make it into a couple lots, four lots, eight lots, whatever, that would have to come back through the regular process to go into the planning commission, then city council for a plat.
Alright, now can we stop someone from building one house on? All right, now can we stop someone from building one house on there?
No, you cannot.
Has anyone? Okay. So even with or without this, we don't normally go back and forth, but I'll allow it this time.
I'm sorry. I, I don't care if a house goes up there, cul-de-sac, fine, you know, four or five houses, it's just one white house or mammoth thing that's going to, you know, that I have to look at.
Yeah, and that's one that I probably would not be feasible to tell you the non-truth right now and say that we can control that. We can definitely make sure that we keep the lines of communication together. I don't know if it's fencing, I don't know what it is, but we can't stop him, if I'm not mistaken, from doing that.
That's just not my concern. I mean, the whole orange town, you know, nobody wants to drive up and down and look at some mammoth, you know, thing there. And I don't think a fifth generation farmer deserves to look at that.
Right.
You know, out of his dining room window.
Yep. All right, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Monique Walters, 5404 Kimball Avenue. I'll just touch on some of my husband's thoughts regarding, and I think, I want to thank Brittany also, because her comments were very good, so I appreciate that. So a couple, a few points. So the integrity, and so this goes to what Brittany said and also my husband. The integrity of one house, because you, that's a lot of land to put one house on, will not fit in with the aesthetics of what is proposed in that whole addition or in future additions along Kimball Avenue. Going to what Barb said, the history and the longevity. My husband's of, well, my children are fifth generation. His grandparents and his great-grandparents built our house, built the other house down the street. Everybody in Orange, they don't leave generally. Just as Barb said, they move there, they raise their kids there, their kids come back. His dad graduated from Orange. The boys all went to Orange. The grandkids go to Orange School right now. And, yeah. So there's lots of history there, there's lots of longevity, and so we just want that to carry over in the entire development, not just what the developer here is purchasing, but the entire development. It needs to be cohesive. That's my points on those. The safety issue, it's been brought up time and time again. I don't think the developer, it's not, Mr. Cody, I forgot his first name. You know, he can't really do anything about the safety and the school and the parking and the traffic concerns. So it asks the city council, along with the school board, there needs to be a solution to that and not just parking down a side street. That's not a solution, because it's not a solution for the neighbors that live down the side street and have trash in their yards after those persons have left. Lastly, maybe lastly, I just want to thank the developer. We did have, I think, a very good meeting and it was last minute and we appreciate his time. I know he's, you know, he drives back and forth out of the North Liberty area, so we appreciate that. It was a great meeting and I think that, I think that he will be a good fit for that. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else before I turn to counsel?
Mayor, members of the council, Lisa Skubel, Grove Cedar Valley, 360 Westfield Avenue. I think everyone's did a great job presenting this information tonight. Barb, you've done an excellent job presenting your information. Is it Barb? Brittany, I'm sorry. No wonder you're looking at me strangely, I'm sorry. If anyone's not familiar with Grove Cedar Valley, we're a community and economic development organization, so our goal is to not only grow Waterloo and the Cedar Valley from an economic development standpoint, but also the quality of life and population. So we appreciate your recognizing the importance of future development, particularly right now when we have housing strains in the United States as well as Iowa and the Cedar Valley. So we appreciate that. And to the developer from Iowa City, for him willing to take on our, a new market and continue investing money to do this housing, large housing development that I think is probably the largest that anyone can remember. So with this proposed development, that it would add 200 new units in Waterloo, we support the city's staff recommendations, action of approval and other condition as outlined and said verbally by Brittany in the council communications that you have in front of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Eric Johnson with the Beecher Law Firm, Waterloo resident. I'm only a first-generation Waterloo resident, so you might not want to listen to me, but a couple of things that I would say, to rebut some of the things that were said at this last meeting, my client, Mr. Anderson, the original developer, he did meet with the neighbors. We had meetings with the neighbors back in 2018. We met at Orange School. We considered many of the requests, many of those were incorporated into changes and revisions in the plat. Came to planning and zoning, more changes occurred after going to planning and zoning. Not all of the residents' requests were met, in part because not all those requests were ones the developer could control. So that comes to what has been asked today on this resolution. My client supports that, but I think you need to understand some of those things that are added, those aren't things that the developer can do themselves, these are things that the city's going to have to be a participant in, water, the, the school's going to possibly have to be a participant in some of those things. And if we're going to have this developed, if we're going to have the homes and the housing that we say that we want, it can't just be all on the developer, it needs to be on parties participating with them. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So I, I do apologize to the Orange Neighborhood Association. I was, I was not able to make the meeting last minute. I had a, a prior family commitment, but I am very glad to see that you had this conversation. In my conversations with folks who live there and from what I'm hearing now, you feel more comfortable. I can tell you, and I can only speak for myself, that I will do my very best to make sure that, that your concerns continue to be heard, that this is just not a one-off thing for you all. I'm very glad that the developer is there. I'm very glad that this relationship is moving forward and I'm really glad that we could, we could find common ground on this one.
Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just, in regards to the, the, the five things that were, were brought up this evening, I, I know that we've, we've already started to have some discussions. I sit on the Board of Water Works along with Mr. Bozen and I know that, you know, those things, the water, excuse me, the water pressure and all of that, that kind of stuff will be looked at and discussed in, in detail. And as the council liaises on to the complete streets, I, I know that we, you have a bulldog champion with Ms. Cass sitting as the chair for any developments that, that's going on there. So I have the opportunity to work with, on those two of the five. And then I think as this proceeds forward, if there's concerns in, in regards to the number four, I think the council can, but more importantly, the Orange Neighborhood should attend and discuss with the school board members their concerns, because that's more, that's going to carry more weight than what, what we can do. Not that we can't have those conversations. And the good news is those meetings are not on the same Monday, so you can attend those. You know, just make sure as you do, you will have to register to, that one, you, you can't just get up and talk, you do have to register with Mrs. Arndt Dorfer before the meeting, so make sure that you do that. But I would reach out and have those conversations and I know with the incoming new superintendent, he would probably love to hear your comments as well with, with those things.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank all the Orange Neighborhood Association members who showed up to the meeting and thank the city staff that was open and willing to have conversations with the neighbors in the area. I think it was a very positive meeting and I'm happy to see this thing move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to echo Mr. Nichols and I'd also like to thank Mr. Hodap again for taking on this development, 209 lots. That makes a huge difference in this city and I'm so proud that we were able to yet again come to the table with a developer who is so willing to talk with the Neighborhood Association, is just showing a pattern that we are going to work together as this city. So thank you again for all that you've done. The water issue, I just may have learned that that study has been done and has shown your issue, so be looking for that on the agenda for next year.
Anyone else? I want to thank, I know the entire neighborhood organization, but I want to thank Mike and the reason being, it's not easy and I can tell you, it's not easy to be able to navigate people with strong feelings and then at the same time try to do something to push things moving forward. So I, I watched you navigate at that meeting and I just want to tell you did an incredible job of, one, holding, holding folks here accountable, but two, also making sure that you can kind of steer through what we know wasn't necessarily the truth about, about some things that were happening. So I want to thank you for navigating that and having that discussion to the developer. I want to thank you as well. You know, you start out, you have a vision and you're like, wow, this is a, sometimes I won't say a no-brainer, but kind of like a no-brainer for a city that needs it, but it's good when you can take into account the feelings of those and the concerns of the neighbors in that area. That makes for an even greater project because the neighbors will end up being some of the greatest advocates and cheerleaders for that development, so thank you as well. We've had to reprioritize some things as a city department and deal with some issues that needed to be dealt with as far as waterworks and detention and all those areas. And so leisure services, but all the council members were engaged, whether or not they were able to attend or not, they all had questions as well. And this is a, really a good example, depending upon what happens on this vote, but this is a really good example of how folks can come together and try to create winning situations. And it doesn't always go as smoothly, right? But I think this could be an excellent opportunity for this city. Number two within our strategic plan is elevate housing. And then number five or so, it focuses on neighborhood connections, one of those numbers. And you got to make sure that this is compatible with the neighborhood connections and safety. So anyway, that, that's it. Madam Clerk, number five.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foist.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. Could someone take six, seven and eight, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving policy for recreational fires and rescinding resolution number 2003-230. Next is a resolution approving a two-year school resource officer agreement with the Waterloo Community School District to provide six school resource officers in the schools for fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $308,053 and fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $323,455 to include funding for officer training and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And lastly, is a resolution approving an encroachment agreement with V12 LLC for a portion of Kimball Avenue and San Martin Drive, city right-of-way located in the C-1, C-Z conditional zoning district east of 1029 People's Square and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Does anyone have any questions on these three items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just on, for, for number eight, I, I, I'd spoke to Sandy a long time ago about, not about this particular thing, and I know we're ahead of the game because I did talk to Noel, but I just want to throw that out there as well. As we're looking at this development and where the, the right turn is coming out of this potential development, I, I would like us to look at the traffic again. Like I said, I talked to Noel, I know we're very preliminary with all of this, but just making sure that we're looking that people aren't crossing lanes. That's, I've, I've almost hit too many people coming out of the, by the, that San Martin Access Road. So as we're going through, if we could let the developer know that, just to be careful on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could, could Chief Trulor give us an overview on, on what we're rescinding out of recreational fires and now's the season for them?
Mr. Trulor.
Sure, Pat Trulor, Fire Chief. So what's before you is a resolution updating an old one, I think it was from 2003. We've made some changes to the code that we've adopted as a city. You as a council adopted the International Fire Code 2021, updated code, and this reflects some minor changes that will be in effect. So previously, it was a three-by-three fire that we would allow within the city. The IFC has, the code has reduced that down to three feet by two feet. And then it's also expanded out where recreational fire can be from a structure or any combustible to 25 feet from 20. Those are basically the only changes. The city Waterloo does have a perpetual burn ban in place with an exception to recreational fires. Bonfires, prairie grass, those types of burning events need to come before this council through a permit process and that's also reflected in Title I.
So chief, on a legal recreational fire though, if, if, if it's, if the smoke is going into a residence and, and they're bothered by that smoke, they can call?
Correct, yeah, for sure. So part of the resolution does give us the ability as the Fire Department to ask for a legal fire to be extinguished if there's a, a health reason with a neighbor, they have their windows open, that type of thing. For the most part, people are pretty good and respectful. We also encourage anybody that's having a recreational fire, just to let your neighbors know.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, six, seven and eight.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foist.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols.
Yes. All right, thank you. Someone take nine and 10?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foist.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Third Amendment to the Development and Minimum Assessment Agreement with Warren Transport Inc., originally executed on November 18th, 2019, changing the completion date to March 31st, 2023 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Ten is a resolution approving a real estate purchase agreement with Deere and Company and approving deeds to sell and donate real property to the city of Waterloo for the acquisition of property located southeast of 3801 West Ridge Ray Avenue, formerly the John Deere Supervisors Club at no cost and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Are there any questions on these items? Oh, oh, oops. Mr. Hersman, are you, are you there? All right, please come forward, sorry about that. You have concerns or comments about this item?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Tom Hersman, I live at 1122 West 10th Street, Cedar Falls. I am the president of the Cedar Valley Soccer Club and we would like to thank the city of Waterloo and Deere and Company for working with us. This year is the 30th year of the Cedar Valley Soccer Association and this is the 21st year of the Cedar Valley Soccer Complex, so we appreciate your support. We currently serve around 2,000 children in 16 or more communities surrounding northeast Iowa. We have three full-time staff, 20-plus part-time coaches and over 200 volunteer coaches. We also have local, state and regional competitions and last year, you may have actually seen Mayor Hart do his kick there. We're hoping that you come out and support our tournament again this year. It's one of the largest recreational tournaments in the state of Iowa, June 10th through 12th. And again, we appreciate your support.
And if anybody asks, I made that goal on the first, first try. Thank you. If you haven't had an opportunity to visit out during the weekends or when there's tournaments, definitely something to, to be very proud of. Bring so many people together from so many different walks of life and so many different countries. It's really a truly incredible program. So thank you so much. Questions, counsel? Madam Clerk, nine and ten.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes. All right, thank you. Eleven and twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Charles.
I move to adopt a resolution approving temporary no parking on the west side of the two hundred block of West Fourth Street during the outside and inside construction of the Waterloo Convention Center. Number twelve, I move to adopt a resolution approving the amended final plat of Audubon Heights Seventh Edition, a replat of Audubon Heights Fourth Edition located south of one seven four seven Rush Drive and acknowledging and consenting the corrected final plat, certificate of survey and affidavit of surveyor.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Are there any comments about these particular items? Counsel? Madam Clerk, eleven and twelve.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foist?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Charles?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take number thirteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Who'd you call? Sorry. Me or Mr. Amos?
Yes, sir. Mr. Amos.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving an employment agreement with Dr. Joel Fitzgerald for the position of police chief effective April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. And I think we have Mr. Gustafson. He wanted to make some comments first.
Carol Gustafson, two oh nine Forest Avenue in Waterloo. I'm speaking on behalf of the West Central Neighborhood Association. We had a meeting this past week and we did talk about this issue. And the majority of the people that were in attendance said that their biggest concern was, is that they've not seen anything that justifies the increase in salary that is going to be provided to the chief. I know in my job, when I was working for the Waterloo Schools, if I went to my boss and said I want to have a substantial raise, the question would be, show me what you've done to deserve this. I think that that's a pretty common response anytime that somebody wants to have a substantial raise. But it's really hard to understand when you've not seen anything in the paper or anyplace else that explains exactly what the increase is predicated on. So I just, I know that there's probably, it's already been decided. But I just wish that maybe in future that the council would consider maybe doing a little bit more to let the citizens know what their tax, taxpayer dollars are going towards. Especially when we're talking about increasing the salary to be the second highest paid police chief in the state of Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nathan?
Good evening. My name is Wayne Nathan, five four eight Cloverdale. I decided to come here and discuss this issue tonight. Mister, I have never met Mr. Fitzgerald before. I seem like a really nice guy. It's first time face to face. But what I'm here about is to strongly ask the council to not approve the contract for him. And the reason is he applies continuously for other jobs. He's not content with being police chief here in Waterloo. And the proof is there. Do not, just please do not approve this contract for him. It's very questionable how long he would be here even if you did and so forth. As far as qualifications, he exceeds the qualifications. He, he's very knowledgeable. He has the ability to lead our police department. But again, I repeat myself, please do not approve the contract because he won't be here that long to, to serve the four years. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nathan. Is there anyone else?
Forrest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I do have a strong concern about a substantial pay increase for this position. We will very soon be considering all salaried positions. And those salaried positions will probably be about three percent. If we were to grant this contract, that would add a lot more money to it. About four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars with that three percent. So if we went with this and added the three, we would be knocking at the door of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for that position. The citizens of this town are not full of money. This town is hurting in lots and lots of areas. I'm sure you all see it and you're, as you go around the city. Other people have stated things. This is kind of a work when you want to position. And reading the contracts, the old and the new, is kind of a work when you want to. There's nothing that says be in the office nine to five or any hours, any days, any weeks. There's lots of stories going around out there and I, I won't repeat them, but you've probably heard them all just as I have. This to me is like a part-time position, being paid the second highest in the state of Iowa. Our taxes are about the highest in the state of Iowa. We need to balance these things. We need to have a working financial, just like on the front of this agenda. That's one of the things that states there is to make this a livable place. You just raised the taxes on us. You just raised them again this year. And fees, the tiffs, it all just is money taken from those folks who chose to stay here or chose to move here. It is a burden on us and I would again ask you, please do not approve this contract the way it is written. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Everyone who's approached me about this subject has asked what protection is there for the citizens of Waterloo with this upcoming contract? Again, I ask, and I've asked this before. I handed out a piece of, an editorial. I tried to get put in the paper and apparently they don't like it. Why are we starting with the most, with a recent employee? And does anyone else working for the city have a four-year contract? Or all present employees are at will, which the previous police chiefs have been at will? So far from the last asking, no one has answered this question. None of you. I looked up a previous chief's contract which says at will. And it's only three pages. This thing's seven. So why do we need a contract that's seven pages long? And are we going to start that with all of the rest of the city employees? Noting comparisons, nothing was addressed on this contract on resignation, termination, severance. It was addressed on this and not on the previous one. Resignation, termination, severance, insurance policy or state law on cognitive or physical fitness. It was on the other guys, on the other officers. I see at least on the contract, vacation time has gone from a hundred and twenty-seven days, hours to a hundred and sixty hours on this contract. Also, no, no talk about residency, not to mention hearing the mayor's mention just prior to this, to the KWWL broadcast about the chief being in the top six for a job in Washington State. That's the chief is no longer looking. And that was stated at a town hall meeting or board meeting I was at. I urge the council to vote this resolution down. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dreyer. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to item number thirteen?
Nita Hall, two ten Birch, Waterloo. And I'd like to kind of go along with everything that everybody has said. But I only have one question where I doubt the police chief or council can answer. Why is he looking for another job outside of Waterloo and our state? That's it.
Thank you.
Don Henry, twenty-one twenty-one West Seventh Street, Waterloo. I'm just going to try and, and look right at you, Chief Fitzgerald, and say, it isn't personal. To me, I know you like, you're the, it's like the elephant in the room here. Everyone's like, oh gosh, can't say it. But you have an extreme amount of education. It is to be commended. I think it's great that anyone could go forward and get a PhD in something like this. But I guess my heartfelt thought is, and why are you settling for a chief of police when you could easily be at a college, a junior college? Lawrence College teaches a lot of criminal law. There are many of the police officers here in Waterloo have taken those classes. I feel that you are, with all due respect, overeducated for this position. We cannot afford, because we can't afford that position. If you were in a college and wanted that much money, I'd say yes. That's the way it is. But this is Waterloo. As others have said, we don't have that kind of money. And when you were in Vancouver between last month and this month, I'm sure you were selling them on you and why you would be a perfect fit for Vancouver. And so that to me tells me you're not a perfect fit for Waterloo. And I'm sorry about that. And I'm sorry that it's kind of come down to this in the last couple of years. It's just gotten kind of ugly and words are said, things are done. And it's not necessarily correct or the right thing to do, but I think there are just many people out there that who just want to know why we turn around and pay twenty-five thousand dollars more to someone for four more years when we know he's got one foot out the door. With all due respect. And I think that you need to rethink what you're doing and the message that you're sending. Waterloo needs many, many things. Water pressure and orange, all kinds of things. I know it's a different budget, but it's still the taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Charles.
It's rare that I speak at these because I like to talk a lot behind the scenes with citizens that talk with me, but I think this is important. So what I heard, I kind of wrote down some things here. I've heard that Chief Fitzgerald exceeds qualifications for a police chief. I've heard that he should be a professor, which professors make less than that. I can tell you as someone who works at a university, it makes significantly less because that's a different field. It's a different, different idea. So don't even compare. I don't think they're even comparable. I wasn't alive thirty, no, I'm thirty-two, thirty-one, about to be thirty-two. And what that means is I don't have the luxury or disadvantage of seeing the past because I wasn't here yet. I was in heaven. But now I'm on earth. And what that means to me is that I see Waterloo as a place that is growing. I see our potential. The water issue, that's going to be fixed. I, I see all of these positive things happening. And Chief Fitzgerald has day one stepped into a position and got, do you, do you remember what happened when he was, that was Floyd? And he came in day one and stood there and prevented riots from happening. This man has done so much for this city. A lot of the things that happen at that level are behind the scenes. I have a personal relationship with the previous police chief. And him and I have talked about this a lot. And I always say, you know that you have to do a lot behind the scenes. And he's like, yeah, I know. And I'm like, Chief Fitzgerald is doing so much behind the scenes and you know it. We can't look backwards when we're trying to create a new future. I understand that previous police chiefs didn't have the same type of contract. Well, maybe they should have. But why are we looking backwards to determine that? We should look forward. What do we want to change? What are we going to see Waterloo look like in ten years? It's a little easier for me to say that because I'm thirty-one, not sixty-one or seventy-one. But that's my plan for this city. I ran on that. And I will continue to make sure that I am doing what I believe is the best and what I believe is best for my ward twenty years from now. So when I am done on this podium, that we have left it in the best hands. Chief Fitzgerald has done so much, has given so much to this city. And it is not our job as council people to micromanage an employee's position. If you'd like to see what he's done, you can go onto the Waterloo webpage and you can see his accomplishments listed out on a several page-long document because it's there. And you could also ask him or you could ask me. I will gladly, well, this is not the appropriate venue for that. But I will gladly speak with you about his accomplishments. As I've said before, I am here to talk to you. But I feel very passionate about us moving forward with employees that are as strong as he is. And he is setting the stage for having these type of contracts with other division managers. So that way we are respecting our employees. We are respecting public safety. Something that was huge in this last election was respecting public safety. Well, he's kind of in charge of public safety. And it is not our job to check if someone is applying for another position. This, that's a prerogative. But our job is to make sure that this is a place that he can call home. So if he is still qualified and his, we're doing better in hiring, morale is going up. If all these things that are positive are happening, why do we want to lose that? Why don't we give it a shot? Well, I mean, if you were attacked frequently, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be fun. When the first day you come in and you are literally preventing riots, preventing riots. I wasn't alive when the riots happened, but some of you were. Prevent it. There's value. We have to look at our propositions in this city as value. This chief brings value to this city. You bring value to this city. But we have to break down these walls of, of animosity. We have to be willing to talk to people that you may not realize that you agree with. I've had lots of conversations with Chief Fitzgerald and they've been amazing. Amazing man. And he's done a lot of great things for this city. I invite you to go on to the webpage and look at his accomplishments. The fact that he's not bragging about them is great. This is what I've been telling people who've asked me. Do you want a politician for a chief or do you want a police chief for a chief? I assume you want a police chief. You want someone who's doing the work and not talking about it, not someone who's bragging about it every second. We've had that in the past and I'd like to continue that. I'd like to continue having a police chief for a chief. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? And so just, just answering a couple of questions without going into detail. I had received emails asking, well, why should he be the second paid highest police chief or what has he done? And immediately to echo what Councilman Charles said, when you go to the city of Waterloo's website, there's almost forty-seven different things that he's done so far in this year. Those are accomplishments and it might be, it might not be something that you can see because you're not internally in the department that he's in. But he has been making change. I was one of the people that were out there after George Floyd was murdered. And Dr. Joel was in the middle of a crowd of hundreds of people and they were just hammering him with questions left and right. And he's
left and right. And he stood there until the event was over and the park cleared and he answered as many questions as he could. And this was before I even considered being a councilwoman. I set an appointment with him and I interviewed him for four hours. He answered every question that popped up on my screen, every question that got emailed to me, and he was very patient. So I know that he is the chief that's going to get us to the future and make sure that we are heard. Not just that, to ask why he should be the second paid highest police chief to me, I don't feel as though we should be asking that question because he doesn't compare to any of the other police chiefs. This man has a master's. He has a doctorate. Why are we comparing him to people that don't have the education or experience that he does? He's been in law enforcement since nineteen ninety-one. I believe he deserves that. So I'm not going to say, well, this is just Waterloo. You should choose something less. I'm going to say, no, you should bring whatever you have here and help us grow and help us become better than what we are. So I'm gonna vote yes for Dr. Joel's contract because I want him to stay. My concern isn't what he gonna, he's gonna offer anyone else. I know what he's gonna offer Waterloo and I support that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I want to echo some of the things my colleagues have been saying. Because this man, as a fellow doctor, is very qualified, very well educated. And I think he's doing a good job. Some of the folks I talked to, a lot of the folks I talked to think he's doing a great job. From the very beginning, he stood in that crowd after George Floyd was murdered and just held his own and helped keep that, keep that crowd together, keep that community, community together and answered every question that came to him. Some folks have asked me, well, what has he done to deserve this? Well, there's a number of things. If you, if you talk to some, talk to current, some current law enforcement, they'll tell you morale has improved within the law, within the Waterloo Police Department. There's a lot of different things that are contributing that, contribute that. One of the things that I've heard about is the change in the hourly schedule that provides for law enforcement to have a better work-life balance or an extra day at home to spend with their families. Another thing that I've heard had to do with partnerships with federal agencies, whether it be the FBI or the US Marshals that are giving our law enforcement broader jurisdiction to be able to do their jobs to make our community safe. So I mean, you can go to the Waterloo Police Department's Facebook page and see all of the accomplishments. But those are just a couple of them that really hit home with me and seem to be really impactful for the people in the law enforcement office that talk to me about them. So that's why I'm also voting yes on this.
Mr. Mayor. I'm listening. And all of you know that my time on this council is short-lived. Prior to me being and having an opportunity to move forward in government, I told the mayor, eight years is it for me because I'm going to defer to the young people. This is their future, not mine. I'm living my future. One of the things that I heard the audience talk about is, is, well, he's looking for work other places. He's not loyal to Waterloo. Someone said, answer that question. Well, I can tell you, as a resident of Waterloo my entire life, it's not because of Waterloo. As a young black man living in Waterloo, when I started my work career, I started at a place that did not pay me enough to stay there. What I did was is I looked for other work. I ended up finding work at John Deere's, which was the highest paid job in the city. That's what I went after. I went after it because it was going to improve my lifestyle. It was going to provide me with a better lot in life. And anyone who doesn't understand that this job that the chief has, and it's a job, you have to understand, if you go to the state website and look at the rules for a police chief serving the city of Waterloo, they serve at the whim of the mayor. This contract says that, yes, it's four years. But guess what? If that man over there says, I no longer need you, he's done. He might have a few perks for leaving, but if a new mayor comes in, a new mayor can say, you're done. And then he's done. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. And that's pretty much anyone. I heard that at-will thing. We're in the state of Iowa. The state of Iowa is a right-to-work state. Any employee can be hired and fired for any reason. And you have to understand, I understand exactly what the chief is doing. You know, because there have been so many things that have happened that many of you are not privy to. You don't see it. You don't understand it, but it happens. And I can tell you that they do happen. So for me, like I said, I understand what all of these other council people are saying. If we want to keep someone who is going to stay here, then we have to pay them properly. I remember Chief Jennings, chairing the Waterloo Human Rights Commission, that I did. That was one of the big things that Chief Jennings talked about as far as even attracting officers to the city of Waterloo, was the pay. Because these jobs that they do, they're not something that I would do. I'll, I'll, I'll be honest about it. I would not risk my life for the money that they make. You know, the chief is doing exactly what he should do as a man. Take care of his family. That's first and foremost for any man. And if we as a council do not look at this from a standpoint of, we need to keep someone here who is going to make sure that his family comes here, that he's able to provide for them, then we're not doing what we should be doing as a council. I'm sorry, but that's just the way that I view it and I will stick by that forever. So please understand that I'm voting yes. And I'm not voting yes because it's going to take out of your pockets. I'm voting yes because we as a city need someone just like the chief. And hopefully, when the chief leaves, because he's not going to be here forever, the next person coming in will be paid properly also.
Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you for meeting with me one-on-one to discuss the issues that I have with the chief's contract. I have the utmost respect for Chief Fitzgerald and the job he's doing. I don't agree with a large number of items that are in this contract and the mayor knows this. And, and personally, I think this contract should be effective July first, not backdated to last month. That's just my personal opinion because July first, non-bargaining employers are going to get a pay raise. And the chief is, will be up for that pay raise because, you know, item B three clearly states that he will get pay raises in accordance to the non-bargaining pay. So number one, I think it should be July first and not, not April nineteenth. Number one. But two, the city agrees to keep him employed for four years. But, and, and Jerome is right. My colleague's right. He has the right to look other places. But because there's nothing in this contract that says the chief has to stay here for four years. And, and I, I don't, I don't have that big of a problem with that. I discussed B three about, about the additional pay that might be due to him July first. Right now, we budgeted a two percent pay raise for non-bargaining employees. If we stick to that, that's a thirty-three-hundred-dollar pay raise. So that puts him at sixty-eight-three in six weeks. If we maintain this effective date to April nineteenth, we owe him a month's back pay. If we continue down this path, if, if we decide for some reason as a council to give non-bargaining people a three percent pay raise, that's four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars extra. That puts him right at one-seventy. The, the, the big sticking point, and I, and I discuss it, discuss this with the mayor's severance pay. A year's severance pay. I think every department head and every division manager should have a contract. But do I think that they'll get a year's severance pay in their contract? Right now, they get ninety days' severance pay if they're removed from their position. And I think it needs to be the same across the board. Either we give every department head and every division manager a year's severance pay or we go back to the ninety days, just like everyone else. And that's, that's a sticking point with me. The year's health insurance is, is another sticking point in the severance package. Because if, if another department head gets removed, they don't get a year's, they don't get a year's health insurance. I don't even think they get health insurance past the day that they're, they're terminated. They just get a payout for their ninety days, ninety days. And keep in mind, when they do get a payout, it's a lump sum payout. This contract states that the chief will get a paycheck every two weeks for a year, which I can understand. I'd want that in my contract because of the tax implications of getting a one-time payout of a year's salary. So I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't fault him for putting it in. I just disagree with it. Okay. J, J one A, the city agrees to pay all of this dues to civic organizations. Every, almost every department head in the city belongs to civic organizations and they're required to pay for it out of their pocket. And the city has, has a policy that we refuse to pay for them to belong to city or organizations. So if we do that in this contract, then we need to include it in all our department heads and our division managers. The, the twenty-four-seventh vehicle access, I agree that he should have one. I don't agree with the personal use part of it. And that's an item J three A. And item ten, or K ten A allows the city and the chief to amend this agreement anytime. And it should, and, and I understand that we should be able to amend this at any time. But I think K ten A should clearly state that when approved by a majority of a city council vote. I don't think that the, that, that the contract should be amended in any way that doesn't come back before this council. And because of that, and, and the mayor knows my feelings, those are the reasons I won't be supporting this, the contract the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boson. Is there anyone else?
Yes, sir. So we've heard a lot, I mean, mentioned about the, the degrees and everything else and, and working in education, you know, you pay for those degrees. You spend your time, your money to get those degrees away from your family. And for those that hold doctoral degrees, they are compensated appropriate amounts. And I think if we have any other employee that has that, you know, we could certainly to honor those things. And we, we've heard a lot, I mean, not about what chief has done, but a lot about his personal life. And I think we, we understand you're a public employee, however, your private life, you have that ability and should be afforded that opportunity to have your private life stay private. And I think when you delve into those things, it's not about what, what's good or bad. It's about you might not be here for a day or you might be doing something. And I think we forget sometimes people are human. People make mistakes. People have families and lives and, and a lot of other stuff. And I think we, we really, in this day and age of instant access and instant, you have to do this, we forget that there are human beings that have a lot of stuff going on with their lives. And, and, and the chief has lived here, you know, separated from his family. I've done that one time in my life. It's not easy. It's difficult. But we ask why he's leaving? Well, what this contract says is we don't want you to leave. We want you to be a part of our city for the near future and maybe long-term. And plant your family here and to grow and to, to do a lot of other things. Our city maybe hasn't embraced him as much as we should have. And I think, you know, by, by having this, that's what we're doing. We're saying, we want chief. And, and, you know, it's been brought up, other department heads. Frankly, let's have those conversations with our, our division managers and our department heads. You know, let's, let's go through these things. Let's have the same opportunities for everybody else. Let's have that commitment to Waterloo because when you have good people and you have the right person in place and you have them here long-term, that stability provides a lot more for the city that they're working for. And I think that that's very important. So I'm going to be voting yes on this contract. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So unlike what is believed about many of us, I have not made up my decision up until a few moments ago on this decision. You can believe whatever you want, but that is true. I, I spent a lot of time thinking about this and looking at the contracts. And I, I think there are several things that we have to peel back on this. One is that, as my colleague, Mr. Boson, had said, Waterloo has a certain financial situation. As a property owner, as a taxpayer, as a, as a public school teacher who makes what public school teachers make, I am incredibly aware of what I have to pay for my mortgage. And I'm incredibly aware of what my constituents pay. And I am incredibly aware that county assessments go up, but, but wages haven't in a lot of cases, unfortunately. I, I am incredibly aware that, that with this vote, we are setting a precedent for this position and other similar positions. And, and we should all be very aware of what financial weight that carries because we are, so long as we serve on this dais, stewards of public money. And that is something that I take very seriously. I also know that for, for all this talk of not making it personal, it sometimes feels very personal. So Dr. Fitzgerald and I have not always agreed on all the issues. And, and we have had some hearty discussions about, about where we are in things. But I do think it's incredibly important to note that, that literally on his first day here, mind you, he moved here from somewhere else to be part of Waterloo. I think we need to remember that, that, that he did choose Waterloo. That he did choose Waterloo. And on his, literally his first day here, he had to go out into and deal with the, the thorniest and weightiest issues of policing and race and the very difficult history that our community has on his first day. Not his first week, not his first month, not, he didn't get a grace period. It was trial by fire the first day. And I think that says something. Now, there, there's a lot of, of hay being made about him applying elsewhere. I'm not native born from Waterloo. I was born in Council Bluffs. I spent my first eighteen years in Council Bluffs. Then I lived in Decorah, Iowa. Then I lived in Omaha, Nebraska. And then I lived in Princeton, New Jersey. And then I lived in Dubuque. And for two years, I taught at Waterloo West High and drove every day back and forth to work at West High. I got up at four-thirty in the morning so I could be there to help kids before school and help kids after school. I was exhausted at the end of those two years. And I say that because it's important to remember that just because someone has to make changes and sacrifices because of their personal life, doesn't mean that they don't love this community. There was talk of, of the police chief being part-time. I can guarantee you that I have called or texted the chief at some incredibly odd hours and he is accessible. His job's not nine to five. Crime doesn't happen nine to five. Crises don't happen nine to five. He's not part-time. And I think that's important to note. But more importantly, we have to take this out, out, out of the, of the realm of the very harsh conversation we've had over the last year about policing and whether or not some of us back the police or don't back the police and about who the chief is aligned with and who the police are aligned with and who on council is aligned with whom, and take it up to the ten-thousand-foot view. Waterloo is a community. And I understand very real the costs of what it takes to run the city. I, I sit on the finance committee. I look at these bills every week. And I get that it's tight. I get that inflation is hard. I absolutely get that. But I also know that I don't want a tenpenny police chief. I don't want someone that we can get for a nickel and a song. I want, I want the best. And in the current work environment, the hand is in, the hand is, the, the cards are in the hand of the worker. And so I very much understand the weightiness of these financial decisions. I understand that we are, we are asking for something. But it is not something without a benefit. And that is a continuation because if you ask the police officers, the police officers, what morale is like, where the department has been and where it is going, if you ask the people who actually know, they are saying things are on the upward trend. I know that there are stories. I am. I am incredibly acquainted with those stories, but reality is different from stories. And so with heavy consideration to the finances, and having made my decision not until we got to this discussion point, I will be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, it's, we, we've had this conversation for a while, but it's time to vote. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
No.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number fourteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt an ordinance amending the traffic code by deleting section five-four-eight A, no parking, pickup and drop-off only in its entirety, and inserting in lieu thereof a new section five-four-eight A, no parking, pickup and drop-off only to Waterloo traffic code as follows. One, one hundred Jefferson Street, pickup and drop-off only in front of the Hawkeye Community College Building.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Anyone with comments about this item? Sandy, did you want to say something about this, or are we good? Okay. Madam Counsel. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second and third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Fifteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and consider for the first time an ordinance amending Chapter Three Sewer Regulations Title eight-nine-three-A-nine-two, Determination of Rates and Charges to Increase Sewer Rates.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Anyone with questions or comments about this item? Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, no, uh, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Oh, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
All right.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Michelle, this was scheduled to happen. Charlie, we got some time, we gotta... Okay. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.